unmute all of you panelists here if I can. Can I do that?
Can you hear Leslie?
Oh, thank you, Gordon.
Yes, I can see myself.
Okay, I see, let's see, we need to, let's see, okay, John, you're muted. Leslie's muted and who else is? So you might, you might want to go ahead and, can you unmute yourselves, John and Leslie? I don't know, I mean, John Nixon and Leslie.
I'm unmuted.
Okay, thank you, Leslie. And John, how about you?
Yes, yeah.
Cool, okay. Let's just not all talk at once, but that way the panelists don't really need to worry.
Well, I have, I have another voice in the room, so I'm going to be muted until I need to say something.
Okay. Good point. Well, in that case, I see that we have a quorum here, all committee members are present, so I call to order the Standing Policy Committee of the Cambria Community Services District. And I, all members are present. And this is a Zoom meeting.
It's the same thing as for the other day.
So let me see here, if I review my script. All right.
More than, but it's just the same thing.
No, it is, but it's different. Okay, it's one I rewrote the lessons.
Okay, the chairman's report's going to be pretty short. There are a couple of things still in the works that I'm working on, which I will have for you at our next meeting. There are two issues, one is an inventory of existing policies that was started by Jack Rohrbach, and so I'm just pursuing that a little further and hope to, by next month, we'll have a complete inventory of all the existing policies and where they reside, because there's things that are online, there's things that are in documents, just trying to establish, create some order so that we know where things are. And the other thing is to be sure that when there are multiple copies, that they're all congruent with each other. We don't have old stuff hanging around. So that'll be one area that I have started on, but I don't have enough to really show you any result that would be understandable. Ultimately, I'm probably going to ask for some help from you guys on that one. And then in addition, we had some direction from the board a couple of meetings ago about taking, what, how can I say this? In 2014, the board revamped its bylaws and eliminated a considerable amount of them, feeling that they were more appropriately documented as procedures or policies rather than bylaws. And so we've been asked to be sure that those things that were dropped from those original 2013 bylaws, that they don't be forgotten and that, that they do be documented. So I've commenced that already, and it is the case that some of those things that were taken out of the bylaws have since reincarnated themselves as policies in the district, in various, the district's filing systems. But to try to bring some order to them and to be sure that the, what was eliminated from the, to determine whether there are differences between the, what was eliminated from the bylaws originally and how those policies, if they're since being used, that there's some correspondence between those, or to at least notate, note the differences. And so that'll be coming to you also. And it's, for no other reason, it's just interesting as well as we go over there, because we're looking at from 2013 to now, that's what, seven years? So a lot happened in that period of time. Other than that, getting used to these, this, these Zoom meetings, that's been a challenge for us all. And I do have the feeling we'll probably be doing this for a while. So at some point, I would like to, as a future agenda item, I'll bring it up at the end of the meeting again. I'd like to hear a discussion from you all and from the attendees that we, that come to our meetings as to the format and whether, whether this webinar format is something that you would like to continue with or whether, whether people would prefer a more interactive, the regular kind of Zoom meeting where everybody is kind of coming in at the same level. We can still use the, if we were to go that way, we can still, by clever use of the host's privileges, we can still keep chaos from developing if we should choose to go that way. But I think that's something that's worthy of discussion. And I'm asking you now, I guess, to, those of you who know people who have attended these webinars, and many of them now in their own lives, like you, John, for example, where you've been using Zoom with your family, and I've been using it with my family, I think I would like to hear some, some feedback on that, because we do have that option, should we choose to go to a different format. The other thing of real importance here, and I think quite exciting, is I'd like to report you a little bit about the work that's been done by John and, I got the right ones here? Ah, yes. John and, which one is it, John and Gordon? The, somebody help me out, my, my brain suddenly went south. On the replacement of the board directors, is that, that's John Nixon? And who's the other? Thank you.
That's, yeah, and that's on the agenda for today.
On the agenda. Oh, no, I'm sorry, I got the wrong one. I have notes here, let's backtrack, that's on the agenda, so forget that I said that. The one I did want to bring forth, oh, is the other one, the email, thank you. This is John and Ted's project, and I just wanted to just bring the rest of the committee up to date on this a little bit. We've, John and Ted have commenced working on this, this is the email retention and management. It's been extended by board action to include all record retention. So it's now a review of our record retention policy with the intent of including some direction regarding email retention. And also, I've asked for some additional, what shall I say? Additional guidance regarding email management, we might wish to look at that. So John and Ted are heavily involved in that and, and going through, looking at state statutes, county rules, and such like. And it's an ongoing thing, and my function in that is largely as a resource to show, to explain what, what things are happening now or other issues having to do with that. So John or Ted, would either of you like to come in on that? And do you wish to add anything to what I've said so far?
Since we only met yesterday, we, I, we're collecting some documents from city and county and maybe other documents that would be a good resource or, or model. And Ted and I will be reviewing those and hope within a week or so, we can meet somehow and come together and begin to draft a document.
Excellent.
For eventual review, if we can get it going, maybe next month's meeting for this committee to review an early draft.
Excellent, excellent. So we look forward to that, that'll be interesting.
Yeah, John, I, I did, did, did you forward me anything? I didn't receive anything.
I've, I've got a document from the city, Blake Fixler is, is helping me find the right documents from the county, and then I'll get those to you within a day.
I just, I just want, no worries, I just wanted to make sure you didn't send me something and end it in my spam box or something.
No, not yet.
Okay.
Excellent. Okay, anyway, moving right along, just as, as a, personally, I'm very pleased with how the committee and how you've approached the work with, with good humor and with some hope of success. So I'm very pleased with how things are going. I do remember that this, this can be a long process. We, these things can take some time and we shouldn't be frustrated if they do. It's just part of the, it's just part of the deal. So having said that, that constitutes my chairman's report, excuse me. So we're ready for the ad hoc committee reports, and we have one on our agenda today, which is the subcommittee discussing the CCSD policies regarding people experiencing homelessness. And for that, I think Claudia, you are our lead, oh, who is, okay.
Gordon's the lead on that.
Okay.
You got to unmute, you unmute yourself.
Mute.
There he comes.
Okay, I found a different button, too many buttons. You can hear me now, I'm assuming.
I can hear you now.
Yes.
All right. The committee had a couple of meetings, the major one was Carlos and Claudia and myself. We had some discussions of opportunities of getting together, but our main lead person for a lot of the information was Leslie, she wasn't able to attend that meeting. So then we had also Claudia and Leslie met by phone to indicate some opportunities, what they were discussing of trying to move forward on this homeless activity. So with those meetings, Leslie put together a outline, if you will, of what potential arrangement we could move forward for the homeless by utilizing PROS. And we hadn't had, not contacted PROS to, to see what their ability to participate in this would be. So we've invited the PROS committee members to participate, and I'm not sure who's online today, but there were a couple of them who said they were going to attend. And with this, I sent a copy of this outline, which everybody on the board should have that here. Is that correct, the committee? Did you all get this email? Okay, and with that is the outline that would utilize PROS as a go-to organization to put together different agencies. And with these agencies, they would be able to work as a, in the end, a MOU arrangement to, as outlined, to put together the different needs that the homeless seem to have and how we can control those under one roof. And along with that, they would be able to also utilize some grant money as a possibility. And then we could also have the other organizations involved with the more cleanup activities and more people with agency responsibility to work with the homeless. And that's what this outline, it's in the PROS Homeless Ad Hoc Committee, if accepting this challenge would be responsible for it. And so this would be the first pass at trying to see if this is acceptable to PROS. And if you have read through this and have gathered any additional information that would be appropriate for this committee, then we want to move this forward for the next meeting. Leslie, do you have some comments of what you'd want to show on this?
Yes, Leslie.
I did know that I was supposed to do a presentation today, I gave the actual minutes to Gordon. So I can answer any questions concerning the actual PROS portion, if that's okay with you guys. So my, my suggestion is that the, we have to have a framework, and that's in the actual document there. You have to have, to get grant funding, you have to have some type of framework to accept grant funding and to monitor grant funding. So one of the requests by Carlos originally was, he needs more money and more staff to do what he's doing in the field. So I focused on funding mechanism, but if that's not the focus, I understand, we can go in a different direction. But at this point, that's why I had focused on the PROS program, okay?
Gordon? Looks, can't hear you, Gordon.
Was there an echo in the communications here?
Just a minute, Claudia.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Was, was there an echo there? We're trying to work this out with the people in two different rooms here. I didn't know how that was coming over.
I'm not hearing an echo.
Okay, that's fine then.
I think you had something you wanted to say. Excuse me.
By the floor? Do I have the floor?
Yes.
I, I had a brief conversation with Becky Jorgensen today, who has been running Hope's Village for several years now. And she gave me some pointers that I thought would be good to incorporate when we talk to PROS. And that is that, and I'm sure Carlos can confirm this, but it's really important to find out the age of the people that we're dealing with, because it's generally the, it's generally the younger people who are the ones who are, you know, doing the drugs and really kind of causing more problems. And that was from her experience, because she's been doing it for a long time. So she suggested taking lunch to them and, and talking to them. I mean, she had no qualms about doing that, befriending them, and in a personal way, humanitarian way, you know, approach them and kind of determine, you know, what homeless we had that particular week, because I know it changes all the time. And she said that, you know, as far as young people, you know, put them through the system, you know, you know, give them eviction notices. She also said before, before that, and this is something maybe Carlos has already done or planning on doing, and that is that, she said, we really should post a sign at all the entrances or the possible entrances onto the Fiscally Ranch or any, any CCSD property. And Carlos told me there was, there was a lot, there's over a hundred of this, you know, whatever, and all the acres. But if he, she said, if you posted signs saying that these, this is a preserve and there's no camping allowed. And she felt that, that, you know, a lot of these people can read and that maybe they would choose to go someplace else as more of a public land rather than a private land. So at least it isn't hard to do that. And then she did, and we're already doing that, she said, do you, she said, are you using the, the county mental, mental health agencies? And I said, we're really not at this point in time. I don't think Carlos can correct me, but I, I think Carlos has been doing this pretty much on his own. And she's told me that the, that for instance, like there's a women's shelter that is quite active, and they changed the name of it from the Women's Shelter to Stand Strong. And so that, she suggested that, and of course, transitions, mental health for different things. They've actually spent half a million dollars recently on a van so they could perform public outreach. Of course, she was a little bit outraged by this outreach, by spending, you spent $500,000 on a van, you could have spent $500,000 housing the homeless instead of, you know, out trying to talk to people, whatever the, whatever this van is going to do. She, she does think that putting the porta potty in the, in the water station, you know, in the hand washing stations and the, in the dumpsters, she thinks that's a good idea, because she's done that in San Luis, it's been very successful for them. They've done in Atascadero, it's been successful for them. And, you know, always have to monitor it to make sure that they don't dump the, you know, I don't know, dump the porta potty or, or start bringing more, you know, more homeless, because we have facilities, you know, for them. And then she also felt that it would, it would not be, you know, unlawful to have volunteers help. We had people come forward before and they were told, I don't know, by the CCSD or someone, that they weren't allowed to do that. Well, there are things that volunteers can do until someone is hired to help Carlos with this problem. So it, so, and I know that there were a lot of people who came forward and they were all turned away. So, you know, tell them just not to touch, you know, needles and those kinds of things. But there's another reason why they couldn't take them to lunch and just talk to people. They don't have to start cleaning up, but just help with that. And then maybe after things have been gone through, maybe they'd be able to help, you know, with places, you know, maybe they have an extra storage unit that things could be stored until people could be moved. And I mean, there's all kinds of things that people can do that do not jeopardize their health and wellbeing. So she also said that it's no, there's no, there's no law against having homeless on public lands. Not a good idea, but there's no, nothing against that. And I told, that we were dealing with, with the preserve, and she says, well, that's public lands. No, no, I said, this is private land. Oh, well, that's different, and you can regulate it and you can regulate it as, as we have been. So she understands what our situation is. I also think that we should continue to pursue the, the churches. I know that the Santa Rosa Church and the Vineyard Church have, have tried to help in the past with some of these problems. I know they find it difficult, but I think we should still continue to encourage them and any, any of the other churches that might be willing to hose, hose a homeless person or a family that finds themselves out of work during COVID or something like that, you know, that kind of thing, that kind of public outreach to help those kinds of people. So that's pretty much what I have for that.
Question? Can I ask a question?
Sure, Leslie.
Who is Becky Jorgensen? She's the person from Hope's Village?
Yeah, she started Hope's Village, she's been doing this, and she's the one who created, created a whole bunch of these little mobile homes, I guess. They're, they're like little trailers, and they're basically a bed, a dresser, and, you know, a nightlight or something, you know, something like that. There's no bathroom in them, and no water facilities. And the idea, and she is, she's been working on this for a long, long time to try to find land. And I, last I talked to her about that, she did find some land, and they're trying to move these onto some land, donated land, and then create like a park, you know, situation. And these are considered park, park-type structures, because they're mobile, because they're on wheels. And then they would have a common kitchen and a common bathroom and showers. So that's what she's been doing, so. And she's, she's, she's really one of the, the top experts in this field, so that's why I contacted her. And I, I was in her group for a very short period of time, but their meetings are in San Luis, and I found it difficult to, to attend, so, anyway.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments?
Is there anyone from PROS here that has any?
What? I do see one person, Haley, do we have? I can call and, I can ask someone to speak here, I can see him lurking out here. Here he comes. Okay, Haley, could you go ahead and introduce Mr. Cooper? This is Stan Cooper.
Hello. Can you hear me? How do you do? I'm, I'd like to address the document that was emailed to me. It seems to me that the focus of this document is to move the homeless on. And I didn't see anything in it that what Claudia was talking about, about servicing the needs of the homeless community. Their reasons for existing are myriad. It isn't just drugs and young people. It's post-traumatic syndrome, it's, it's mental conditions. And however we go forward with dealing with the growing homelessness in this country as it's manifested here, there's got to be a, there's got to be a, there's got to be some humanitarianism involved or else it's just a bum's rush. And I'm not interested in being involved in that at all, of just moving them on down the road. I will tell you this, that my wife used to work for a mental health in Nevada, and what their solution was for homeless was to round them up and give them a bus ticket to California. And, yeah, I mean, let's be real, not my problem, NIMBY. So I, I just, I just want to see, you know, before you guys put this onto the parks and, on, on to PROS to be the agency to kind of focus it, I think there needs to be more of an idea what you want. And, and I also think that it's very possible that the county is the appropriate agency to deal with this. After all, they have a budget. And I don't know if you guys are aware, Carlos certainly is, we don't have a budget. We don't have any way of funding anything. And then with, with issues of, of dead budgets with, you know, coronavirus and stuff like that, we won't have a budget. Because you guys, Don, I, I think you're aware of the fact that everything's going to get cut. It has. So how?
Except for our rates, our water rates.
Yeah. So how do we solve the problem using diminished resources? Because in terms of tax dollars or whatever, I just don't see how PROS can be the effective agency for dealing with it.
Well, the intent is to have the ability to have the grants issued to different agencies, thereby standard up for the homeless people's activities.
Okay. Thank you, Stan.
Can I comment?
Wait, Leslie, first John Nixon and then you.
I, I would just like to circle back to what our charge is in relationship to this issue. I agree with everything that Mr. Cooper said, and I, and I support all of the ideas that, that were expressed by Claudia. But CCSD is not a social services agency. And so if we're interested in developing policy related to homelessness, given the, the parameters of responsibility of CCSD, I, I think we should reflect back on that and, and not, and not move in directions that take us out of our charge.
Okay, thank you, John. Leslie?
So the original mandate for PROS was to be an arm of the CCSD for funding, for grant funding. That was the original reason that PROS was created in the first place, many years ago. A, B, Gavin Newsom has established over $500 million for homeless programs in his budgets. So for us to have a mechanism where we could actually land those funds into the PROS program, we could go ahead and do some of the issues, address some of the issues that Mr. Cooper is addressing here. So you have to have the framework for these funds to land on. And so I appreciate that the budget is going to be cut or there's budget issues with the CCSD. I'm trying to focus on finding mechanisms that can fund these programs and activities and support us in our efforts to help the homeless. So I, we were given a homeless removal policy, and that's where we started from. And now this has expanded into a homeless issue completely. And I agree with what Mr. Cooper said, that we should expand it to a humanitarian effort. But again, I also agree with Mr. Nixon, that CCSD is not a social service agency. There are other agencies in the county that can support us and help us in this measure so that we don't do those efforts. So I focused, that document is not necessarily a bum's rush, it's focusing on having a framework that we have to have installed to receive the grant funding from Gavin Newsom's government. And if you don't have that framework installed, you do not get those funds. So funding is the key here, in my opinion, and I think we should move forward with this. Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. Ted?
Leslie, I guess my question is, do you see the, I mean, obviously, PROS is not going to be the, the, the group that administers, if you will, the actual work that's done? Do you see PROS as being an agency that, where the money lands and then the PROS people would be appropriating that money to various either agencies or groups or whatever that can, you know, assist with the, with the work? I'm not exactly sure where, where I'm, where I'm seeing the, the money mechanism get to the end product. Maybe you can clarify for me.
Can I answer that?
Yes, I'm asking you directly.
So the PROS is an administrative component, it's not in field, they wouldn't actually be doing hands-on, they would be doing administration for the actual grant funding. They would also be preparing memorandums of understanding between these agencies. Example that I used was, instead of creating our own storage facility in Cambria, we could actually use the Prado Center Storage Facility for the 90-day storage of personal effects. So there's, there's other mechanisms that have already been established. And so we could use these memorandums and understanding where we would trade services, and we would pay for those services through these grant funding mechanisms. So they would be the administration capabilities, they would also be documenting where the funds went on a yearly basis, the effectiveness of the program that we're trying to establish here. But they would keep the, they would keep track of it. You're required to keep very stringent records on these grant programs that come through, where the funds are going, how they've been used, and then to renew the program on a yearly basis. So PROS would not be asked to be in field, they would not be asked to do the actual, we have facilities and resources that are already doing the in-field work, but they would be asked to administer these programs, like they've been doing for grant programs for the public park, the actual soccer fields. They, they've had experience doing this in the past, so it's just an expansion of what their capabilities have already been, in my experience.
All right. Thank you, Leslie. Any other, John, John Nixon?
I just, I, I would just want to hear from CCSD, either Mr. Weigold or the board, that, that this is a direction that CCSD wants to pursue. PROS doesn't go off on its own, it is a, PROS work is a function of CCSD. And so own. It is a, a function, PROS work is a function of CCSD. And so while I agree that more should be done, more could be done, is CCSD willing or able to take PROS and its own work in this direction? That's all.
Interesting question. Uh, I think the, the only way we're going to get an answer to that is to get a proposal before the board and, and see what they, how they react. Uh, but we don't want to be, you know, spinning our wheels and presenting stuff that, that really has no hope of acceptance. This, this is an interesting problem. Uh, I want to be sure before I say anything, as everyone said what they want to say. I'd like to hear a little word from Carlos. But uh, first, before Carlos, Claudia.
I'll be right back.
Just one thought. Um, you know, we have to remember that, that we're only dealing with CCSD property. And I, I think that's key. So to say that the CCSD shouldn't be involved, yes, they shouldn't be involved in, in all of the homeless problem, but just on their own properties.
Okay. Thank you, Claudia. Uh, and, and Carlos, I think, would you like to comment as, as we, at this point, in a little bit?
Uh, sure. Uh, so just wanted to piggyback on a point that Claudia just made and John Nixon also made, as far as, you know, how far we want to take this policy to. Um, as Claudia just mentioned, you know, the CCSD owns just a portion of where the problem is, which is Fiskiwe Ranch and CCSD-owned properties. Uh, there are far more homeless, excuse me, living, living on Caltrans property, uh, state parks, downtown businesses than there are on Fiskiwe Ranch and CCSD properties. And so, you know, I think it's important to keep that in perspective, is how far out do we want to go with this policy? Uh, because we, I don't believe we have the resources to be able to do what social services should be doing. And uh, most likely, it's the county that would need to step in to deal with all of these other areas around town. Uh, you know, it's hard enough just to, just to deal with the, the properties that we have at this point. So just a thought, just something to, to keep in mind. And I'm sure the PROS Commission is gonna look at that and say, you know, are we going beyond what, you know, what we should?
Thank you, Carlos. Uh, yeah, Ted?
Um, you know, uh, one of the things that came up here was, and um, I can't remember who the gentleman was that, that spoke uh for, for the PROS gentleman, was talking about mental health and mental health issues. Um, so what, what vehicles are available at all to, to help with, with those types of things that, 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 that PROS would go to anyway if they had, you know, $150,000 or $200,000 to go, you know, to, to put into some group or some uh, you know, purpose of, you know, of, of dealing with, with, when they're now, because mental health is a huge deal. I mean, that's a huge part. I think it's a probably, you know, one of the single driving factors with, you know, the homeless. So what vehicles are available?
Can I answer that?
Yes, please.
Leslie, go ahead.
So County Mental Health has what's called case management steady workers. They're individuals that go out into the field and have been developing cases on these individuals that are chronically homeless for many years in the county. It would, we could, again, do memorandums of understanding with county mental health staff to actually come on site and assist our CCSD facility resources staff during the actual removal process from Fiskiwe Ranch, as an example. So you would have multiple agencies showing up on particular dates. You would have security from Sheriff Department. You would have our facility resources staff. And you would have county mental health staff who would be on site during the actual removal, notification removal process. Again, this requires MOUs and it's staff time from county mental health that has to be accommodated. So again, you need a funding mechanism to support these individuals spending the time in our locale. The cool part is that we don't duplicate. We don't repeat ourselves while under stress. A lot of these individuals that we have on the Fiskiwe Ranch are, have been in the system for many years. And they are, they've been circulating through different communities, and they have case management studies already done and prepared to give kind of a background of what we're dealing with here. So it makes the placement issue for these individuals easier once you've already had this mountain of paperwork already accomplished. So we have the resources in the county, but we don't have the actual mechanism to organize the cooperative agreements that we need to do. That's why we have to have some type of mechanism like the PROS to arrange these agreements and these relationships between our CCSD and the county mental health. So it is available. Thanks.
I, I need to kind of cut this discussion short because this is really a committee report. But so Ted, go ahead, but keep it kind of brief.
Just to, uh, just one last question, uh, because, uh, you know, it's mentioned that, uh, you know, giving people bus tickets to come to California. Are we seeing an increase, a, a more stable number, or a decrease in the number of uh, people affected in the homeless, you know, category here in, in, in Cambria?
Can I answer that, Dawn?
Yes, yes, please.
Well, okay. So online, I, I was involved with removal of a homeless population in December of 2019 at a house on Bridge Street. And I found three search engines online on the internet that showed Cambria as the number one location on the central coast for safe harbor. It was Cambria and San Simeon because we do not have police force and because we were so receptive to allowing homeless to actually encamp in town. So, and if you go online and check out these search engines, one search engine is under Reddit, R E D D I T T. It shows that we are the, literally the number one destination on the entire Pacific Northwest and Central Coast because.
Holy pro.
Yeah, we're, this is going to be a problem. It's going to expand exponentially here over the next few years. The way that the local agencies have been addressing this, like Morro Bay, Atascadero, is they use their police force to make individuals move on. And the moving on is to Cambria and San Simeon right now. So uh, that's what I've been investigating. The other thing is, it's another one, it's called Rubber Tramps. That's another site you can look up. It's an actual local chat room, which talks about safe haven, places to rough camp with vehicles. And the other one is Rubber Tramps. Three different organizations, online chat rooms, that you can have open dialogues right now on how great it is to come to Cambria and set up a tent on Fiskiwe Ranch.
Wow.
Yeah, it's, it's quite, it's quite eye-opening when you see what is coming this way. So, sorry. Thank you.
Leslie, uh, to, to, in the interest of moving on, oh, Gordon?
I just agree with your comment here. We've had a lot of discussion, and that's what our intent was, to open this up a little bit, to, to give us as a three-person committee to get some guidance and feedback. And so we'll pursue these in the next month, have a more full report next month.
Excellent. I couldn't have said it better myself. Uh, go ahead, Claudia.
To be a little bit more proactive, uh, do we think that maybe that Gordon or more of us should go to the PROS meeting on, in June, uh, to present this to, or Stan, is Stan still there? Stan?
Still here.
If he's still here. Um, you know, maybe he could ask to have that put on, have us put on the agenda.
Okay.
Or you can ask to do that, or something like that, whatever, we do that. But um, I think that, yeah, we need to do that. Okay.
Sorry for interrupting you. We have two PROS Commission people here, actually. Haley, could you go ahead, unmute Mr. Cooper and then follow with, with Adolf?
Yes. Haley, go ahead and unmute yourself.
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, yeah, we can get it on the agenda. That's, that's not a issue. I just, um, you know, in regards to Rubber Tramps, uh, that's an old term. It's not something that just came down the road. It refers to people living in um, old school buses and stuff like that. That um, they are, they're a mobile group. And um, you know, I, I, I feel really, really creepy right now with the discussion that's happening. I own a home right around the corner from my house, a couple of blocks. There is an encampment on private property. It, I feel creepy about it, but at the same time, I think that the guy that owns the property is um, is basically decent person, who's allowing people that have no place to go, to have a place to park their vehicles. And they're living in their cars. And um, I don't know. I mean, we can get it on the agenda for, just tell me what language you want it to be. Um, Dawn, you have my email. You can email it to me.
Yes.
And sure that I get it to Steve Neff and it will get it on the agenda.
Okay. So I'll mail you, uh, I'll send you the address. Who, who on the, on our ad hoc committee is our lead person? Is that Gordon?
Yes.
So Gordon, I'll, I'll send Stan your email, and then let the two of you communicate.
That's fine.
Uh, I have a couple of comments before we move on. But we do need to move on with this. I mean, this is a huge topic. Oh, wait a minute. Uh, we did have, we have one more.
Adolf, you have?
Yeah, can we hear him as well?
Yes. And I would also like to add, if you want to add this to next week's um, PROS agenda, I will need the description today.
Okay.
Okay.
What day is that meeting?
It's on Tuesday, June 2nd at 10:00 AM.
Okay.
Okay, I'm going to bring in Adolf.
Thank you, Haley.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me? Okay.
Yes, Adolf.
Listening to all this, I, I think there's a, an impression that PROS has a staff. So basically, it's the five PROS commissioners who would be discussing these, these issues. But then we would pass it on to the CCSD as to what our particular uh, comments would be. So want to be aware of that. Uh, we don't have that extended help, so to speak, in order for us to do MOUs or whatever else might be required. And uh, and I agree, Stan, that, that we will have a meeting on Tuesday. And we would like Mr. Hendricks or whoever in the meeting in order to refresh the rest of the committee what's going on.
Excellent. Thank you, Adolf. Uh, I'll make a couple of comments. Just, uh, I thank you very much. It's hard work. Uh, it's kind of exciting in a way because it is such a big problem. Uh, the way I'm seeing this, uh, it's just me, but I, we, part of the reason I think this is an appropriate thing for us to be doing is that, well, the CCSD has a responsibility to protect its properties, which are the properties that the community owns via the CCSD. Uh, it, it has certain obligations in that regard. But we also know, and, and the CCSD has recognized that it does have some other responsibilities. The very existence of the PROS Commission, parks, recreation, and open space, does go a little further than just maintaining uh, CCSD properties and providing water and sewer service. Uh, I, the reason I think this is probably a good thing that we should be doing, and please continue, is that in the process of doing what we need to do as stewards of the ranch and the other properties that we, that we own, we still, we don't operate in a vacuum. And so it's important that whatever actions that we do take comport with what else the county is doing and what else is going on in the community. And so for this reason, I think that this is very good, that, and please continue with your discussions. Uh, I, I do want to point out one thing. In the wording of the email of the, that, that you sent around, Gordon, uh, there is some confusion. You need to be careful in your terminology. P R O, PROS itself is a commission. It's not a committee. And that's very important because the only thing, there are the only group that has a budget. None of us, none of these other standing committees have any budget at all. Uh, when there is money, PROS does, from time to time, get actual money from CCSD. So it's a, it's not a standing committee. It's actually a commission of the board. Uh, that's one thing. So when you refer to the PROS Commission, be sure to use that terminology. But the other thing is, in your document, as you go through, you also refer to a P R O, a PROS ad hoc. Now, you need to bear in mind the difference. An ad hoc subcommittee is a, such as your own subcommittee, is a subcommittee of another organization that's been formed to deal with a specific problem. And then once that problem has been resolved or the report has been made, then that subcommittee disbands. So in, in your, in your write-up, it's a little unclear whether you are referring to the PROS Commission per se, or whether you're advocating an ad hoc subcommittee, either to be formed out of the CCSD itself or out of the PROS Commission itself. So I, I'm just asking for clarity as you go forward. Do, do bear in mind that very important distinction between those three. There's the commission, the PROS Commission. There's a standing committee, such as yourselves, which exists even when the subject matter disappears. And there is an ad hoc subcommittee. And this, and when you find your document, that ad hoc, uh, which I think is what you were trying to say, because it was formulated to do a particular thing, that that ad hoc subcommittee in your, in, as you go forward in your plan, I suggest that you also put some verbiage in there as to how you are going to fill the members of that. You know, where are those members of that subcommittee, if that's what it is, come from? At any rate, that's enough words for me. Um, I, I realize that we kind of shoehorned this. This is really more of a full-on discussion than a committee report. But I felt it important enough, though, that we needed to uh, give the, because it is such a broad and, and hot, with so many implications, that feedback from the committee and from the community as you go forward is good. So I'm glad that we did this. And I think the three of you, do you have a little more grisp for, for your mill already to charge for?
Yep, good. Appreciate it.
Okay. Uh, moving right along, then we are ready for public comment. Haley, uh, do we have any public comment?
I do not have any public comment at this time.
Okay. I'll count to three just to see if any hands go up. No hands are going up.
No hands.
No hands, no public comment. Uh, moving on to the, oh, yes, Claudia.
May we know who the public is?
Uh, you can. I'll tell you what, if you go, uh, I have to talk to Tim. I would actually like to announce the who's here, but I'm not sure that's legal. But you, being a panelist, if you go down to the participant screen, click on that, and then you'll see it, you've got two possibilities. You have participants, and there's nine of us.
Okay.
Then you have attendees. Those are the non-participants. And if you click on that, you'll see who's here.
Oh, okay. I know Adolf and Stan, and then, okay, and, okay, very good. Okay, thank you.
Excellent.
Yeah. No, I think as we go forward, I'm pretty sure we can announce the names of who's here. But I, I want to get that clarified before we actually move on. I know that if you do a real, a regular physical Brown Act meeting, the public cannot be required to give their names unless they want to speak, and then they have to do something. But they, but they can attend a meeting anonymously. Uh, my thought here in this context is if somebody wants to be anonymous, they would just leave their phone number up or, or make a fake name or something. Enough of that. Let's move on to the consent agenda. Uh, and we have two items. It's the regular minutes of our April 30th meeting. And the second item, the, uh, which this keeps coming back to is, this, we've been a lot of them, the uh, modifications to our municipal code regarding uh contiguous, contiguous street frontage when there's a transfer of a development credit. Uh, so that's actually in your packet. And all we did was just added, we had already had the discussion to, to include the word contiguous, where it says, it must have the, the property that is receiving the water meter and gets to build has to have, it originally said just 50 feet of con, street frontage, but didn't specify that it was contiguous street frontage. So all we did in our earlier meeting was to supply that word, missing word. Uh, unfortunately, it occurred in two other spots in the document. And so in order to be official, uh, I needed you, I need you to pass on the, the now modified document in its, uh, in its form. And if you really want to check me on this, I can tell you where the changes are. If you want to look in your packet, uh, if it's available, you have it available. Or I can just tell you. Or you can just trust me. You trust me?
What page is it on the packet?
Oh, I can tell you. Hold on. I think it's page eight.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. If you, okay, I can tell you where the changes are. On page eight, or page six of your packet, you'll see it says, uh, it's the attachment for consent item 3B. Okay. If you look down at paragraph A1, you'll see where it says 50 feet there. It's about midway in the paragraph. Word contiguous has been added. word contiguous has been added. That's the first spot. Then if you go down to, let's see, go to the next page, is it the next page, let's see, hold on. No, at the bottom of that same page, under B1A, way down there at the very bottom. Again, you'll see, we threw it, we put the word contiguous in there. And then the other place is on page eight. Down the page, you have the little b and then little, little numeral two, that lies, in there you'll see it.
I see, okay.
Okay, so, okay, so you all see it, I just, keep me honest.
You are honest, good man.
So do we, does anybody need to pull anything off the consent agenda? Okay, therefore, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Anybody?
I second the motion.
Okay, how about somebody to move, I can move it, but I'd rather.
Also move.
Okay, here's Claudia Moose. Seconds to approve the consent agenda. Let's see, Haley, I think we probably ought to do a roll call just to, so we know everybody. So Haley, would you please call the roll on this?
Sure. Ted Key.
Hi.
Claudia Worthing.
Hi.
Gordon Heinrichs.
Yes.
Leslie Richards.
Hi.
And John Nixon.
Hi.
Very good, chairman not voting, passes unanimously, thank you. Moving right along, first time we actually did a whole consent agenda without any, any problem. Okay, our first thing to do is we, to discuss and consider amending our annual schedule to change the regular meeting time. And you have an attachment, the next attachment in your packet shows what we are currently scheduled with, and as I recall, it's always that last Thursday in the month, I believe, or the fourth Thursday. I think is what we decided.
Yeah.
I think Claudia, this was your suggestion, was it not? Did I, I mean, to bring this forward?
Yes.
Okay, would you like to talk a little about that?
Well, during this particular time, there's, I don't, I, okay, my feeling was about it, that because of COVID and because we're Zoom meeting, I think that we should ever, we can have the opportunity to have our meetings at a different time. That's a little bit more convenient for people, and that's why, well, we would have met yesterday, except there was a CCSD meeting. But what, you know, meeting at 10:30 in the morning, I think is sometimes more convenient for some people than in the afternoon. So that was, that was kind of my thinking, but when we go back to some of our regular activities and, you know, my personal activities, I have things to do on Thursday mornings, so I actually can't meet in the morning. So we'd have to go back to the 2:30 on Thursdays. But I like to hear what other people have to say.
Good, a good thought. Before we, before we commence with our own discussion, though, I'm gonna, I'd like to call for public comment at the beginning of these items rather than as we go through. So is there any public comment on this item?
I do not have any public comment on this item.
Thank you, Haley. Okay, so discussion by the, by the committee? Oh, John Nixon.
I just want consistency, that's all.
Consistency is good, easier to remember. Anybody else? Ted?
Tuesdays are bad for me, otherwise I'm pretty flexible. Although I kind of like the morning, but, you know, if that's, if that's really problematic, you know, make the adjustment.
Okay, anybody else?
Usually I have more activities with my job opportunities that occur in the morning hours than the afternoons. So that's why the afternoons works better for me.
Claudia, you had a comment?
Well, if we, if we want to do what John asks, and if we will be going back to 2:30, I think maybe we should just go ahead and have it at 2:30, just leave it the way it is. That way we don't have to adjust it in the future, because it might be too confusing for people to make that adjustment, so. But I would prefer to have it in the morning if it doesn't conflict with Gordon. And if it does, then we'll just do it in the afternoon. I mean, you're here today, Gordon, so somehow you made arrangements to, to do.
That's what I did. I'm supposed to be working right now, but I'm not.
If that's the case, then let's, then let's don't do that, because I think everybody can meet in the afternoon. And Thursdays, afternoons works for, I think, everyone.
I have to support Gordon on this one, too. Mornings are my work time, I'm employed in the mornings, so it's difficult, I had to reschedule this morning to be here.
Oh.
So afternoons were what I have scheduled for so far, sorry about that.
This is a no-brainer.
One other quick comment is that if we do, at 2:30, then we're more likely to end at 5:00.
Good point.
Oh, we'll end before 5:00. I'm not hearing a lot of, I think maybe the consensus here is that we retain the schedule as it stands. Am I hearing everybody pretty much on that one?
Yes, and Haley, what do we show in an item, we just, no action, I guess is what we show?
Haley, yeah, no action, okay. That's fair, we can do that, no action. We're allowed to not act, so, very good. Moving then to item B. Oh, okay, this one, and you have, you have in your packet, actually, the wording. This is, has to do, I'll present it, then I'll call for public comment, and then we can have our discussion. So this is discussion and consideration to approve the wording and the numbering of a policy regarding reimbursement of standing committee members' travel expenses and to provide recommendation to the Board of Directors. And so what I have here is, I went back and listened to the board meeting where this was discussed.
Sorry, sorry.
Are you with me, or do I need to back up?
Me? No, no, go, go ahead.
We're good. So this, what happened was, this was brought up at the board meeting, and Dave Pearson had brought this, it was, it came out of the RNI Committee. And Dave suggested a certain wording, and so I simply took that wording, made it a little more official sounding, added a few passive voices and other things, and some compound words to make it sound official. So I will, it's, I will, for the benefit of those who may not, may not have the packet in front of them, I'll go ahead and read it to you. So this is, I'm proposing a new section to our, in our numbering scheme, which is section 4,300 regarding standing committees. Section 4,000, it deals with the board, but there is no, CSDA didn't have anything for standing committees. So I, this is kind of a placeholder, and over the course of time, we're going to probably be asked to do more, add more things about standing committees. For example, how do they get selected, what are their terms of office, those things actually will be coming to us. This is where I'm proposing that they end up. And specifically, the policy we're dealing with today, I've proposed a number of 4,350, which is reimbursement of standing committees, standing committee members' expenses. And it's two paragraphs, 4,351. There shall, there shall be no reimbursement whatsoever for any expenses incurred by standing committee members without prior authorization by a majority of the full CCSD Board of Directors in a properly noticed meeting. Now, we might want to change that to a quorum rather than the full board, but, because right now it would require, it would have to have, you'd have to have all, you'd have to have a majority of the five members, which would be three, under all circumstances. Anyway, that's an issue you might want to address. The other, okay, the next paragraph, 4,352, from time to time, and this is really what I particularly plagiarize from Dave Pearson. From time to time, the board may determine that an activity will greatly enhance a standing committee's ability to, a standing committee's ability to advise the board. In such a case, the board may, prior to the commencement of the proposed activity, authorize, as provided in 4,351 above, reimbursement of travel and related expenses for one or more committee members. So that's what I, for you, for either changing or rejecting or adopting, yes, Claudia?
I think from time to time is kind of, we could work on the wordsmithing, that'll be, you know, from time to time, you know, I don't know. Whatever, we could, we could work on the wording a little bit on this to begin with. I don't really, it doesn't really say much, and it doesn't, no, it doesn't say much. And so it doesn't seem to be of very much benefit, because it says, we, they don't reimburse, but maybe they will. So if they decide they might, and for something that we don't really know what it will be. So I think to put some teeth into it, we really need to have some ideas to what they're talking about. I mean, when would, when would we be set off to San Diego to go to a, you know, some kind of convention? I mean, or where would we go, and what would we do? So without, without any idea, it, this doesn't make any sense, you know. In my opinion, even though I'm on the committee, I don't think we should get reimbursed for anything, you know, except for maybe, you know, maybe some coffee while I'm drinking inappropriately at a meeting, so, you know, whatever. No, I, you know, maybe we should get reimbursed for, you know, using our computer equipment, or, you know, for having Zoom meetings. But I think that it needs to be, it needs to be clear as to what, there must be some reason for this, that, you know, I think, didn't someone get reimbursed for something and we, we had an issue with it? So now we're trying to create a policy? So maybe what it needs to say is, if in the event that somebody, if the, if the standing committee wants a member to attend a meeting, then it must go before the full, full board or a majority vote of the CCSD board, and the issue will be considered on a one-by-one basis, you know, something like that, so.
Thank you, Claudia. I see that General Manager Weigold, John, you have your hand up there. I think this is appropriate for you to comment.
Sure, so this was my original suggestion at the RNI. And so what, what had happened was, there was a potential conference to have, I can't remember what the specifics, well, it was a water conference, and it had to do with future planning or something that was appropriate for an RNI. One of the RNI people wanted to go from the committee. And we looked at, you know, how we would handle hotel room, travel, and there was no way under our existing policies to do that. We also had a couple of members that wanted to go and look at the Orange County Water Treatment Facility, which is an exact duplicate of what we have, equipment and everything for the SWF. And if the, my thought was, if we're gonna have the committees provide recommendations to the board and have to go do things, why should they have to do that and gain the knowledge required on their own expense? We should have a mechanism by, through the board or the committee chairman or however you decide, to at least have the ability to do that if we so choose in the future. But we shouldn't do that to allow a committee member just to go off and do something and then come back without some kind of oversight, that's all.
Thank you, John. John Nixon?
I, I certainly agree with what John said, and I, I would move, and let me back up before I move. I think an appropriate policy statement should be very broad, it should not be specific, because it needs to accommodate any circumstance that the general manager, the board, or anyone else has authority to approve or not. So I think the wording of the policy that you expressed, Dawn, is good, except I would remove the phrase from time to time. It doesn't mean anything, just begin the sentence after the removal of that phrase. I move to adopt, I move to recommend, we don't make policy. I move to recommend the presented policy to the board.
With the change, with the elimination of from time to time?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second? Second by Ted Key. Discussion. Claudia?
I do think it could be better worded, and I think that we might consider bringing it back to the, our policy committee next month after it's been reworded a little bit. I just think it could be, it could be better. And not, it doesn't necessarily have to be specific, but it definitely needs to make sense, so, okay.
It helps to make sense, yeah, I don't have, so, yeah, you can change it any way you like. This is just to get things going, Gordon?
I'm agreeing with what Claudia is indicating, that this is pretty loose, and I'm thinking that if a function is important enough to send a committee person, that the actual CCSD member should be attending this opportunity instead of just a committee person to represent our board as such. And so there are occasions that you want to go on your personal fact-finding missions, and that would be up to you as an individual, as a citizen, not as a committee member, to be authorized to go traveling around the countryside. Because Christine and I have made other visits for the potential for the new arrangement for municipality being handled. If you want me to send you a bill for a couple thousand dollars, I'd be happy to do this. It wasn't approved before, obviously, see how that works? But people now could say, wow, I want to go to this meeting in Orlando, Florida. Well, I'm there, I might want to visit Disney World. See, this gets into a technical aspect. Then you send two people, now you got two room and boards and travel time, it's getting to be very expensive. Then you come back and say, who's gonna pay for this? Well, it's just the Bible, but, well, okay, we need another $100,000 budget per year to send people off on something that, if they have an interest in attending, should have our board members be involved with and not just committee as a recommendation. So I'm not very favorable for the way it's worded, at best, to be open-ended like that with the manager's discretion. The only other way is if it was 100% to approve it and not a majority. That would be the other reason, because one vote, to me, would be that somebody feels that somebody shouldn't be going, not that the majority feels that they should be going. That would be my input.
Okay, well, thank you, thank you. And then Claudia, John first?
Oh.
Yeah, go ahead, John.
Go ahead, no, Claudia, go ahead.
I just say, I agree wholeheartedly with, with what Gordon just said, and especially about the majority vote on that. And I, it's just my personal opinion that we shouldn't be reimbursed, that's just, you know, my feeling. We volunteered to do this job, and now we're asking for money. You know, if we didn't want to volunteer to do this, we shouldn't have, shouldn't have done it, so. And I, and I agree about, you know, if a conference is important enough to send a representative, it should be somebody that is a member of the CCSD Board or a member paid by the CCSD. You know, we just got a race raised, I'm on the high horse about that. And a race got raised because you need money, and now you want to give money to people so they can go travel around the country. Bad, bad choice, very bad choice, so.
Well, okay, so any, any further discussion?
Can I make a comment?
Sure, of course, yeah, Leslie.
Can I come from, I agree with Gordon and Claudia, and I'd like to come from the other angle. Financially, it is difficult for me to go off and do these types of issues. It would be advantageous to go ahead and be refunded for these issues. But I see as part of my responsibility as a volunteer on this committee to, to, to greatly enhance my standing committee's ability to advise the board. I see that as my responsibility as an individual, and I will pay for that out of my own pocket to do that, to make myself as well educated as I can to be in this position. So I'm coming from a whole different angle on it. It is our responsibility to do these actions at our own cost, even though for me, financially, it's a very difficult situation. That's the honor of being a volunteer on this board and policy committee. So again, I come from the other side saying that, yes, it would be wonderful, but it can be severely abused. And again, same situation, yes, $1,000 to Florida to go ahead and do an investigation. There is no limit on this, and we have had, we've had reimbursed reimbursement policy in the past has been abused, I think personally, in the CCSD. So I am very cautious about having an open-ended document like this. I would love to see some type of a limit, a limitation, or some type of a number issue here, because it could get out of control very quickly, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Leslie, John Nixon?
Well, I don't really have a strong feeling whether or not we should exclusively act as volunteers or have, give CCSD the capacity or the authority to reimburse for an activity that, that the CCSD Board and General Manager would like a committee member to pursue or experience. I don't have a strong feeling. My point really has to do with how, how we develop policies and what is the intent of a policy. A policy really can't provide all the contingencies, or shouldn't, in my opinion, all the contingencies of concern that one can think of with regard to providing authorization to the board to allow a committee member to travel. with regard to, um, providing authorization to the board to allow a committee member to travel. So for me, it, it's an issue of either you have a policy that gives authority to the board to authorize travel by someone, or you don't. And to throw in language that offers contingencies that one might think of today, but other contingencies could arise tomorrow. That's not how a policy works. So I'm happy not to approve this or to move, remove it and work on it. But we can't have a policy that considers every contingency because that's impossible.
Good point. Uh, yeah, Claudia.
Um, John, did you just remove your motion?
So we, I think motion's still on the floor so far.
Ted made the motion.
Happy to do that. Or did you remove your motion or you just?
I thought I, I, I'm sorry. I thought, I thought I seconded the motion. I'm sorry.
I know, but John, did you just remove your motion?
If, if I made the motion, I'll remove it.
Well, if you did, I would like to make a new motion.
Let's start over then. Okay. All right. The motion is removed.
Well.
We have to, yeah, I don't think you need permission from your second to remove the motion. So the motion, the motion's been withdrawn.
Okay. I would like to make a motion that, that the policy, um, should be that, that volunteers, uh, for a standing committee should not be reimbursed.
Under any circumstances at all?
Under any circumstances.
Even if the board, so you would simply, uh, if, if I, let me get clear before we, uh, just so we know what we're doing. So you would suggest, in other words, that, uh, it would be forty-three fifty-one and with a period bef, and, and strike that without prior authorization. Just be no reimbursement whatsoever.
Okay. I have to go back and look at them. Yeah. Okay.
Is that what you're moving? I mean?
Yes. I, I so move.
Okay.
I second it.
So Claudia has moved that, uh, policy forty-three fifty-one be adopted with, uh, and that the, let's see, the wording following, uh, committee members be stricken. So the policy will read, there shall be no reimbursement whatsoever for any expenses incurred by standing committee members, period. So that's the motion as it now stands. Is there, and I, I believe there was a second?
I second it.
Okay.
Question.
Uh, yes, yes, John.
We have a commission and a standing committee. We have standing committees and we have a commission. Does that apply to the commission as well?
We haven't been asked that. So I honestly couldn't answer it. I suppose you could say, we could say standing committee members or commissions. Or maybe it'd be better since we haven't been asked to just leave it. Uh, that's a question. I don't have an answer. Uh, Claudia.
Um, if writing policy, uh, for, for the CCSD, the PROS commission is part of the CCSD, but not a paid commission. Uh, so therefore it may be appropriate to include them. We have a couple of people here from PROS. Um, the motion's open right now. They could be asked what their feeling is about this.
Yeah, they're, they've, they've gone home.
Oh, okay. Um, I, I think that we, uh, this is important, whether we add this or not. And, and I would be happy to include, uh, commissions, uh, standing committees and commissions and just see how the vote goes for right now. And then if it doesn't pass, then we can look at it again.
So you want to amend it to add commission and commission?
Yeah.
Is there, uh, if that's acceptable to the mover and the second, we don't have to vote on that.
Second.
Anybody, is that acceptable to?
Yes.
Who originally moved the motion? Okay. Oh, you did. So you get to do it. Okay. So that, uh, the motion's then amended, uh, to read, uh, there shall be no reimbursement whatsoever for any expenses incurred by standing committee members. Uh, let's see, by, it doesn't read well though, Claudia. Let's see, shall be by any commission or standing committee.
There you go. Commission or standing committees.
Incurred by members of any commission or standing committee. How's that?
Yeah.
Everybody agree?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Now we get to vote on that one. Uh, is there any further discussion before we vote? Uh, yeah, Ted.
Yeah. I, I was just gonna say, I mean, either, e- either way, I mean, if, if we say no reimbursement whatsoever, then, you know, that settles the issue. Uh, my only feeling was that, you know, if, if it was something that the board controlled or the board was gonna, um, you know, say yea or nay to, that would be one way of controlling it. But I, you know, I'm, I don't care if, you know, but I think John's point is right. The policy needs to be, you know, either, you know, th- this idea that nobody gets reimbursed or open enough so that the board has an opportunity to, to make a decision. And I, you know, my guess is this thing's going to go to the board and they're going to kick it back. And, you know, there's going to be more discussion on it anyway. But, uh, but you know, I, you know, I, I completely understand, you know, uh, what Gordon and, uh, uh, Leslie and, and, uh, Claudia are saying. I mean, you know, I, that's fine with me.
Okay. So what I'm seeing is, is that this committee would like, is basically this committee is saying, we have considered, that is, you guys have considered this issue and this is your opinion. And that's.
I know.
We're gonna hear it, you know? So, uh, that's fine. And let's just see what they do with it. But we haven't had a vote yet. So, uh, if there is no further discussion, uh, we will go to a vote. Uh, Haley, uh, may we have a roll call on this, please?
Yes. Committee member Wurden.
Aye.
Committee member Heinrichs.
Yes.
Committee member Nixon.
Yes.
Committee member Richards.
Yes.
And committee member Key.
Aye.
Good. Motion passes unanimously. Very good. Thank you all. Uh, moving then to item C. Uh, you're getting all this good stuff here. So this one, uh, again, I will, uh, okay, I will read it, uh, and then I think what we'll do is I will then call for public comment on this before it gets presented. Um, so, uh, this is discussion and consideration of the CCSD policy and procedure for filling a vacancy on the board of directors. So, uh, is there any public comment on this matter, Haley?
I do not have any public comment on this item.
There is none. Let us go forward. So, uh, let me see. John, I think, uh, this is for you to present, right?
John's the lead, yes.
I'm happy to start. So Gordon and I, given the charge of reviewing the current policies, policy related to filling a vacancy by appointment, uh, and then to revise the policy and possibly procedures to, to reflect, um, interest and concern expressed by the board about, um, particularly procedures regarding, um, filling a vacancy on the board by appointment. So the document you have before you, uh, begins with a policy. The policy is a reflection and, and citation of existing government code for filling vacancies on special district boards, um, for the state of California. Um, it is what it is and, and it's been updated to reflect the current code citations regarding, uh, filling vacancies on a board by appointment. The second section, the suggestion is that these would be procedures to supplement the policy. Um, and, and they do reflect discussion, concern, questions regarding, uh, past practice, past procedures, if you will, for filling by appointment. And I, I specifically want to point out the distinction between the, in the first section, procedure to appoint using voting results from the last scheduled election. The, the narrative that is in black is one choice, if you will, or one option. The narrative in parenthetically in red would be a second or a different option for, um, using results from last scheduled election. In other words, the narrative in black says that the, this, the directors shall fill a vacancy by appointing the candidate, um, from the last scheduled election, provided that was, the, the vacancy occurred fewer than a hundred and thirty days past the last scheduled election. In red, the, the directors may elect to choose this option. And then the second red section, it really follows from the idea of the first, should the board in red, uh, not elect, uh, because that reflects the option for the board to choose this mechanism. And the narrative in black continues there with, they, they will do that. Uh, they will use that option if it's a hundred and thirty days or fewer from the last scheduled election. Um, then procedures to apply for the appointment, procedure for board interviews of eligible applicants and procedures for board selection of appointees. Um, Gordon and I are, are presenting a draft here that for those final three sections do not show, uh, or offer options within them.
Okay. Thank you.
That's it.
Thank you. Uh, I need to step away from my desk. George, Gordon, can you conduct the discussion for a minute? I'll be right back. Or, or maybe I, we've been at this for an hour now. Do you want to take a short break at this point?
That's a good idea.
Uh, let's take five minutes, come back at one minute after twelve. Okay?
Good.
John. Can I talk to John for a second? John, are you still there?
I guess so.
Yes. John to your left.
Okay.
Gordon, can you hear me? Gordon? Gordon?
Hello?
Yeah, Gordon, this Claudia. Could, could I ask you a question about this, um, uh, this policy? Did I hear John say that it came from a government regulation? I, I missed it. I'm.
Yes.
Okay.
That's something we have no control over at the moment. Unless you go through the other.
A hundred and thirty days, that kind of thing. Does that come from the, some state government regulation?
Didn't make that up.
Okay, okay. Just, that's just, I want to clarify that because I.
Well, good point.
Okay.
That's, that's very tricky here of trying to work within two agencies and then how to relate to our own voting.
Um, okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Good idea.
Okay.
Okay. I've got contractors in my yard today, so I'm trying to juggle this and answer questions and. Got Gary Gowdy in the back here running some wires for me and.
Well, I just had a neighbor cut a main, um, root of my pine tree, may have killed my tree, so. Asked him not to and they did it anyway. And so I ran out there and they, the guy put some sealer on it. I, I just, I just fit to be tied. I'm, I'm so upset about it. It's a trunk Monterey pine and I called the tree man. He said, you gotta seal it. So we, you know, the guy sealed it up with a pruning sealer. So anyway, I have my tree issues.
Never a dull moment in Cambria. Yeah. I've read your rights. Yeah, I tell you, that's, uh, that's really interesting information that, uh, that, uh, you guys found about Cambria being the number one spot for the Redwood Curtain Bunch, I tell you. Did not know that.
The, the Redwood Curtain Bunch? What is that?
Oh, a Redwood Curtain is a, it's a play about, um, it's actually about a, um, uh, service guy that, uh, ends up, up in Humboldt County and living up in the redwoods and, you know, PTSD and it's just all about the whole, you know, the relationship of people that are heading off to be homeless, I guess.
Uh, another website that I want to turn you guys on to is called Squat Nation. That's another one you should look up. It's quite fascinating. Um, that there is no such thing as private property rights. So you could, you can literally squat anywhere in the country at this point. But Cambria and Sensimene are also a target for Squat Nation. So.
Nation.
I think we're all back. Are we all here? One, two, three, four, five. We're all here. Uh, so let's continue. So John, we, you had just, I think, finished with your presentation. Is that true? I, I think you had finished with, uh, so let's see, I guess the question, we're open for discussion. Uh, yeah, yeah, Gordon.
I think Claudia had a question just at the end there.
Okay, Claudia.
Yeah, I just, uh, okay. So I wanted to clarify, uh, that this is a government regulation. It's a hundred and thirty days. And what you're proposing we do is instead of saying shall, you're saying may elect by majority a vote to fill a vacancy by appointing whatever, uh, from, uh, who won the last election. Um, and you don't, you're, you're, you're subcommittee or ad hoc committee does not like the word shall. Um, are you, are you doing this because you want to be able to do that beyond the hundred and thirty days?
I, I, let me ask.
No, that's, that's not it at all. The, 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 the option, there are two options. And the red represents one option that the board would opt under and narrative in black, if, if. May put for the narrative in black type, the board would first consider, not just consider, they would need to pursue an appointment to fill vacancy by using the results of the previous election as long as that election occurred, let, fewer than a hundred, a hundred and thirty days or fewer than that election. If, if the, if instead of that, the red language is you, is the preferred option, then the board would always have a choice as long as an elect, the previous general election were a hundred and thirty days or fewer. The board could choose to make an appointment from the results of that election or not. So the, the options are, are, are of substance. They're not just wording. The substance is. The substance is, do we want the board to use the option of you of the results of the last election as long as it's no more than 130 days to make an appointment to fill a vacancy? Or do we want the board to have that as an option they could use? If if the elect if the last general election was fewer than 130 days.
Okay, so I'm still confused. So you're saying that this is a California law, but you want it not abide by the law. So that's.
No, 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 no.
No, the policy statements up on the top, they do prescribe actions or lack of actions that can occur within 130 days. The procedure that we're talking about now, we use the 130 days as the limit. As a procedure, that could be different. We're suggesting that to be consistent with state statute and the use of 130 days, we're saying as a proposal that the board can choose or the board must, that's the choice, use the results of the last election as long as that election is no more than 130 days past the last election to fill a vacancy.
Okay, and I understand. So you want to give the board the option. Is that that's?
No, what we're saying to this committee is, committee, here are two options relating to this type of appointment, the use of the results of the previous election.
Okay.
As a committee, do we want to recommend to the board a policy and procedure that says either the board must use the option of appointment from results of the last election? Or do we want to present to the board a procedure that says, board, you may choose to use this option if you want?
Question?
Yeah, Leslie.
In the document, I'm wondering where the 130 days past the last scheduled election is actually written. I don't see where the government code that cited. You say it's citation government code 1780. It says 130 days prior to the next general election. So why is the 130 days used in the procedure to appoint using voting results? Where did that 103 days number come from?
It came from Gordon and me. We we that we could have any number of days there to take advantage, to have the board take advantage of this option. The use of 130 days in that first procedural section is arbitrary. And and we used 130 days simply because though that number of days past an election is cited for a different purpose up above by state statute.
I would request to have that 130 days removed from this section and stick to shall. That would be my recommendation for changes here. There should be no time limit. The 130 days isn't in an appropriate location here on this particular paragraph. It should be, it could be a larger timeframe since the four months term or four year term. So I would say strike 130 days, put a zero there and then stick to shall. That would be my recommendation on this section.
If that's a motion, I'll second it. I know it was a motion.
No, I just.
Wait a minute. I have no I have no trouble with that. I just want to make sure that we're clear. At the moment, I'm not sure we're ready for a motion. We want to discuss everything that you want to discuss about this proposal.
I don't think we're for a motion yet. There's the meat of the proposal. That's only one part of it. In fact, I I I would not be at all surprised if at the end of our discussion we say we're almost ready, but maybe not quite because there this is a rather large issue. And probably the single thing that the Board of Directors has been asking for of all of the things, because we all know that at any moment that could come up and face us. And we don't want to be negotiating a process when we're also trying to fill a vacancy. To have those two things happen at once is a recipe for disaster. So this is highly important and is definitely worth a lot of consideration. So what I'm hearing, yeah, nothing is on the floor yet. So there's issues having to do with the weather. Okay, I'm going to rephrase the question a little here. In that first paragraph, now we're really only what we're really discussing here is just the procedure section. Because the what statute tells us, we have no control over. So the the actual policy, which is a recitation of the statute, we really can't touch, short of giving it a number. But so where our discussion needs to focus is the procedure itself. So and in that, so far in the first section, we have the issue of the question of whether, and this has come up before, whenever a vaca a vacancy occurs, it's always this is has always come up. Should or should not the board simply go to the next highest vote getter? And this is, I think, an attempt to what I see as actually a compromise being offered here. Because the the one position which I've heard is that they to say that they shall take the next highest vote, you know, go get a regardless is one position. The other position is that they may select the, you know. Now, there is some qualifying language as well, which we need to at least look at because it does say if this method is not available. Let me see, blah, blah, blah. Or if the candidate is not qualified, that could mean a number of things. I'm presuming it means not legally qualified. But I could see other issues there. But anyway, so that's one issue. But can we move on through it now? So we're seeing one sense where there's the there's at least as we're stating in three ways. There is the position that the board should always take the highest vote getter that remains. And then there are there are positions that say, under certain circumstances, the highest vote getter can be. And probably we need to talk about that more. May I suggest that we move forward, though, into the other paragraphs? There's we have issues about how or apply, issues about how the interviews are conducted and issues about how. So this is assuming, for example, the board does not choose or for does not take the next highest vote getter. So let's so I think we need to deal with. There are probably those of you who would say this situation would never come up. But even then, you have to be careful because just to say that you'll always take the next highest vote getter. Suppose there was no next highest vote getter. You still are faced with the problem of how to fill a vacancy. So in any case, you're going to have to look at those last those last three paragraphs. So can I ask? Yeah, I'm calling back Christine about poultry feather anatomy. Call back and. Where are we? Okay, I I'm going to be quiet now, but I'd like to hear more discussion on this. So far, there is no motion on the floor. Oh, yeah, Ted.
Okay, you know, I I I see your point about what if there isn't a second vote getter? You know, if somebody ran uncontested, I do think that's an issue to be considered here. I'll tell you, when we get down into this procedures business. When you get down to the procedures for board board selection of appointees, I know we may not be there. But the thing that really torqued me the last time we had this debacle was that, you know, when you were going through the round robin, you know, voting and and people at the podium speaking. People didn't get a chance to even, you know, be considered the, you know, they went around the round robin and it was more, you know, who was up first rather than, you know, rather than giving everybody a level playing field to then take another vote. It just it ended up, you know, it ended up that people who should have had an opportunity to have been voted for voted on didn't get the chance. And I think that was right. And that that's what really torqued me about the about the last time we did this procedures. That area needs needs some serious work. That's all I guess I had I had to say about this.
I think I figured a way. Oh, yeah, go ahead, John.
So what's proposed in that last section eliminates the need for yea or nay votes. There are no nay votes whatsoever.
Yeah.
And and I think our feeling is that that's one tactic that that the board could use to to eliminate the the need for multiple, multiple votes. The ranked order process can can work more smoothly than individual motions on individual candidates or applicants. And and that's the intention now, you know, not it's not the only way. But it is an intention to eliminate yea nay votes, eliminate multiple motions. There's none of that in this process.
Yes. I don't think that's right. Yeah, Gordon.
Can't hear you.
Got unmute.
Yeah, question I have here is to relate to the dequestured part of it where all the questions are presented to each candidate separately and they don't hear each other. So you get a full round robin of the same questions and whatever their answers are relating to their own personal aspects and not being able to hear others' comments. That always got me upset with the system where one person would hear the other one. Oh, well, I can help you. I'll do this one by saying A, B, and C. And so with this arrangement, then you would have complete done. You'd have the call of the public listening to those comments also and would have any questions during their individual points there without the others hearing them. And then this rank would apply. But then, like you're saying, it depends how many people are going to be in contention here. It's going to be one or two or whatever. But that's what we're thinking to avoid the question problem.
Oh, thank you. I think maybe you help us guide this. I I'm going to go back on what I just said before. Maybe we do need to address the question first, which was brought up, which is because everything else becomes moot depending upon how you whether you agree with the position or not. But I think if the position is that under all circumstances, they take the next highest vote getter, I think maybe we need to. And I think that's what Claudia was proposing. Is that true, Claudia?
Yes.
I think I'd like to hear a motion on that. I'd like to get that voted on now because if if we have a majority, then none of the rest of this applies. So I think we do need to take care of that. Yeah.
Actually, it does apply if the candidate cannot the runner up can't run for some reason and can't can't take the position. Then then you would have to go to another way of choosing someone else. Or you would go to the second or the third or the, you know, depending on how many people ran, you could you could do that. So that we'll work on that later. For right now, I'd like to make a motion that we use the wording shall fill a vacancy by appointing the candidate from the last scheduled election. And then we then we take it out. If this method is not available because a vacancy occurs after 30, then we take that whole section out. But you can put if the candidate is not qualified. Well, let's let's move on. Let's only do the one section for right now. And then we can talk about if the candidate is not qualified or available, the following procedures will apply. Let's go into that. Let's not include this in the motion.
Let me come back there because it so what you're asking, first of all, is that we go with the with not the red, but with the because what the red is a substitute for the black.
Right.
Right. And then we take out the 130 days. So should a vacancy occur and then leave out the no later than 30 days past the last scheduled election directors? If should a vacancy occur, the CCSD director shall fill a vacancy by appointing the candidate from the last scheduled election who received the greatest number of votes behind the candidate or candidate who won the election. And then that that would be the motion. And then we'll deal with the rest of it in another motion.
Wait a minute, but you have to say if the method is not available. Okay, you want to stop right there. You just want to.
Because then, once we have that approved, then we can look at what do you do if that person's not because that that determines what how we will we will wear the next section.
Okay. So that's back to you because this is okay. Is that a second, John, or are you commenting?
I have a comment.
Okay, wait till we get to motion stated.
I'll second.
Okay, so the motion stated is should a vacancy? No, the motion is this. CCSD director shall fill a vacancy by appointing the candidate from the last scheduled election who who had received the greatest number of votes behind the candidates who won the election period. That is the motion. And as seconded now, now, John, your comment.
Well, I I I I'm fine with that, except as a matter of our own process here. I I'm not sure that a committee sitting here now is going to appropriately wordsmith all of this. So my suggestion would be that we have consensus to remove 130 days entirely, a consensus that we go with the narrative that's expressed in black and a consensus that that if we go that direction, then we need to reword those procedures to reflect that it's only those the other procedures are only for contingency when there is no candidate who was a runner up to be appointed. Then we would have to have something else. I guess what I'm saying is I I think that we should take the consensus from this discussion. Gordon and I take it back, redo it, and then come back again. Wordsmithing today or in a group, not just today, is just not all.
Why don't we take the motion then as a statement of principle? Because I am, I'm not sure everybody agrees with it. We need to know that. And and I would like to speak to it myself. Normally, I don't like to do this, but once everyone else has addressed this, I would like to say a word. Yeah, yeah, Gordon.
Being part of this, one area that I had concern about is like they're suggesting that they have more than if they got three people run or one person running. The previous one had only one extra candidate or two. The question I was trying to develop was that you want to get the best candidate for this election versus saying, hey, we're just going to take the next person in line. So my point would be if you had a election that the next person in line would say be within 10 or 15% of the lowest next lowest bidder or votes, that would be the one to be considered. Then if you were trying to get somebody that was got in there with two or three votes, that wouldn't represent the total community. And that's where I'm having a little trouble with my own wording there to keep from getting not the most popular person that was considered for the group. Does that make sense what I'm trying to say?
I can see the problem. Let's see, I think Leslie, were you raising your hand or?
No.
Let me be careful what you ask for in some of this. Yeah, go ahead.
That's what I'm saying.
Well, we we have a motion and a second, and so we need to kind of deal with that first. And so I will. I will withdraw my motion and turn it into you called a statement of principle. So we'll just have a discussion about this. And and I I hadn't thought of what Gordon talked about, and that is, you know, who would be those runner ups besides the the next runner up? And so that that needs to be dealt with, and that's good feedback for John and Gordon to 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 look at that more closely.
Yeah, okay.
And that's why I was in favor, and I'm not going to die in the streets for it, but that's why I was in favor of the language in red. Because I think the board should have that as an option, but that's one opinion. Don, go ahead.
Okay, I want to make sure everybody said what they had to say because, yeah, I, oh, yeah, Claudia.
Well, I I I'm back to my motion again. I I think we need to clarify this because if there if if the ad hoc committees and they continue with that, I think they need to know what the majority of our of our board.
Oh, I agree.
Committee thinks about that. So maybe I will reinstate my motion and we can at least clarify that section of it. And then and then John and Gordon can go from there.
Yeah, why don't we take your motion as a suggestion at this point? Suggest that that so they're not totally bound by it? Can we do that? That will that should satisfy.
Suggested motion.
Here's here's where I'm coming from on this. And I kind of see what there is. Now I get to talk for just a brief one on this. First of all, consider what would happen if I had if I resigned today or tomorrow. If I resign tomorrow and we go with the rule as it was proposed, that the next highest vote getter would not be somebody who has the same philosophy I have by any stretch of the imagination. And I care to mention names. So you need to be careful what you ask for. So that's one area where I it kind of bothers me a little bit. But the other the other thing about it, which I do actually like, is if you're within a very close period. is if you're within a very close period. In other words, circumstances change, and what people voted on in November of 2018 may not be what's uppermost in their minds here if we can November 2020. So if you were filling my seat, and you went and you had the vote that was taken two years ago, that doesn't seem very reasonable, in my opinion. So I that's why I thought that the 130 day limit was a kind of a way around that problem. That circumstances don't change that rapidly. So in a three month and 10 day period since the election, if some director were to resign, it's probable that the public's opinion would not have changed that much. That's sort of that's my only thoughts on it, you know. So having said that, shall we take a vote on your just to get some census to how people feel? Is that okay, Claudia?
Yeah, I'd just like to see how people feel.
Yeah, did anyone else want to speak to the motion before we vote? You vote.
Okay. Would you restate?
Yeah, Claudia, let's see. The motion is now it is suggested that the wording be as follows. CCSD director shall fill a vacancy by appointing the candidate from the last scheduled election who has received the greatest number of votes behind the candidates who won the election. And and it's simply we're saying it is suggested that. So we're not binding the ad hoc committee in any way, but this is a good way to get how people feel about this issue. Does that does that state things correctly, Claudia? Are we?
Yeah.
So I think are we ready to vote on this? I think in this case. Let's do it. Well, we can't do show of hands because I can't see Leslie. So I guess Haley, you'll need to call the roll.
Okay, committee member Warden.
Aye.
Committee member Richards. No.
Okay, no, no one, Leslie.
Committee member Heinrichs.
Yes.
Committee member Key.
No.
Committee member Nixon.
John, I don't think we heard.
John, you'll need to unmute yourself.
Okay.
No.
That was a no. So
No.
One, two, three noes, two yeses. Is that right? And Haley, we need to record the no votes. Or John, we need to actually, there will be required that we record the no votes.
Got it.
Oddly enough, but I think the idea is dissent needs to be respected and not just written over by the majority. I think that's the philosophy.
And so a good point. So that's John, Ted, and Leslie.
Right. Yes, thank you. Okay, so taking. Oh, yeah, you're okay, Claudia. Now moving forward.
Just one thing, I, you know, this issue, I remember you brought you brought up the point of what if the person that came behind you did not have the same philosophy, and you were the person that the community wanted. It happened just the opposite. And somebody was, you know, more of an environmental type person, and they brought in a person who was very, very anti environment, and it really caused a lot of problems. And so I I think that's something I don't know how you deal with that. But I but I think having somebody of the same philosophical background would probably be the thing that the people voted for, and that's what they would continue to want. So, yeah, it's it's a tough one.
I remember that, which you were talking about exactly who that was and.
Yeah, I do. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, John.
I I mean, I can't disagree with what Claudia said, except in the context of writing policy incorporating that feeling or that position is virtually impossible. I I I the best a policy can do here for the selection to fill a vacancy is is some way that is logical and can make general sense to the board and to the community regardless of of someone's position, which could change or not change, or issues come and go. I mean, you cannot you cannot define this process by issues.
I need to. We are at our two hour limit. I would like to get to a point where we can where the ad hoc committee has sufficient guidance to go forward. So can we extend this meeting by? Can I have a motion to that effect?
Extend the motion, the motion, the meeting for 15 minutes.
Okay. To extend for 15 more minutes, so we'll close at quarter of one. Seconded by Ted, all in favor, like we can do by a voice vote in favor, say aye.
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 Any nay? Okay, no nays, passes unanimously. So going forward, let's try to get to the point where we can let our subcommittee, you know, give them some good guidance as they go back. Thank you. By the way, I don't. There is. This is complicated and does require some really serious thought. I would like, if I may, I would like to derail the discussion slightly. I need an explanation on the last paragraph, if we could discuss that briefly. This has to do with the rank order method of voting, and a comment from Dave Pearson sent to me noting that as it as it as he understood this paragraph, it would not resolve our issue of having a two two situation, which you could easily particularly in a current in this particular, oh, that's what we had in the past where we had to the board was basically two to two, and neither side was willing to vote for the other one's candidate. So his question is, how would this particular method get us around that problem?
So let me say that to confess, that did not occur to me. Until you just said that. So I think I think that will have us go back to the drawing board here.
May I make a suggestion?
Sure.
You could have a limit on the ranked order. You would have a tie three times, and then all members of the tie would be dropped out, and the next tier would be brought up to the fore. You could stop that from happening by penalizing the two two vote possibly. There's ways around the ranked order.
Oh, yeah, okay. Yeah, there are ways. Thank you, Leslie.
Yes, thank you.
Guys, I tried to forward to you a little video about politics in the animal kingdom.
I saw that, yeah.
That's talking about rank order voting. And if you haven't looked at it, it's 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 very, it's an excellent explanation, actually. And not only for our own operations, but you begin to think about how we might even end up electing CCSD director someday. So.
Don, before we would leave this and and making sure that Gordon and I have as much information as we can, I want to go back to the 130 days. And without a motion, I I just like a sense of of consensus on if if we're going to continue to propose language that would have the board use results from the previous election. Do we have some consensus on whether or not we should set a limit of time past the last election in order to take advantage of that? Or do we not?
Yeah, so let's hear from each one of you. Want to let John know what you think? Don't all speak at once.
I would mind having a limit of time that was a larger limit of time. That's a short limit of time. So I appreciate that two years out would be considered a long timeframe. But in the nature of Cambria politics, I have to say that after 35 years of being here, people do not change their opinions in two years in this community pretty much. So the bottom line is 130 days is just too short, in my opinion. It should go out longer. But.
Okay.
Claudia, I think you have your head up.
Well, I'm not in favor of the timeline, but I but I am. If if you do it, yes, it did occur to me. This first thing was I thought it was too short. You know, I could I could see six or nine months, you know, after, but problems with this because it, no matter what policy you write, there's still going to be issues where the candidate this replaced may not be replaced with somebody with like minded thinking. And I think that's that's the whole reason for this is that we have that happening. Whoever there's the majority on the board is going to vote for the people that they personally like, you know, and you know, it it's unfortunate that happens because then you have you know, then you have people choosing what they want personally and not what the public wants. And personally, I, you know, I think we should spend the money, and I think the public should should vote. If there was a way to do it electronically that was inexpensive, I think that would help to to come up with a consensus of the public and what they want rather than what the board wants.
Thank you. That's actually that is an alternative that maybe ought to be at least looked at, which is and the only reason that I've ever heard for not doing it is the expense, which is holding elections.
Well, yeah, but if you do it electronically, you know, maybe you don't get the whole town, but you can get a lot. You could put it on next door, and you get a huge amount of people. So, yeah, I mean, there are places you can put it.
Let me suggest that the subcommittee do do at least consider that alternative. It's not the first time that it's been brought up. And as I said, the only argument I have ever heard against doing that has to do with the expense. Now, admittedly, right now, expense is a big deal. But if we're writing something for future generations, maybe not so much, and something that we could think about. I think John Weigold has something to say.
So just to throw another variable into the equation to consider here. Don, I know you're you're up to speed on this from Tim Carmel, but there's a requirement on the books to have a representative, subdivide Cambria into different groups, different locations geographically, so that the members of the board represent each geographic group around the community. And so we've not gone that direction yet, but there is a there is a law firm out there that is suing district by district. And so at some point in time, we're going to have to go to that direction. So if an example would be if one section of town comes to vacancy, how does that? How does that happen, you know, in iterations that you're considering?
Yeah, thank you for that. I had totally forgotten. And and that is more, I mean, that's not just a remote possibility that he's referring to. The reason we have not done anything about that yet is simply because we have a census coming up, and we did not want to pay for an additional census for this. So once the results of the census are out, I don't think we should be surprised if we see this coming up. So my advice to the subcommittee is to consider, you may want to actually put a paragraph in there about that so that we don't have to address this a second time around. So you need to be thinking about the possibilities of district representation rather than at large. I'm sorry, it just adds additional complexity to an already difficult situation. Yeah, Gordon.
Can't hear you.
Whose idea was this to initiate?
What? Oh, it's it's been John, maybe you can.
Oh, go ahead, John.
I mean, John Weigold, yeah.
Well, I I'm just aware of what Tim Carmel briefed us, and and he just brought us up to speed that districts are not required yet to do this, but there there are some law firms out there that are taking advantage of the situation and and suing districts that aren't not complying with this. And the there's there's basically, I think it's a maximum $30,000 fee that they negotiate for or something. And so but the cost for us to implement this is vastly higher. And so it was more of a financial and a practical decision, I think, from the board perspective to on this for the time being.
It actually is grounded in a court case about 12 years ago in California, and it it first hit school districts. But is and almost every K 12 district and community college district in the state have already, if they hadn't been structured by by voting areas, have gone that way. And and the court case, the original court case and the findings of that court case have held up every time it's been challenged. So it, you know, it it will probably come. If someone if someone in this community wants to pursue it, it will come, I'm sure.
Question?
Oh, be quiet. Yeah.
Is there any court cases concerning water districts to this point?
I'm not aware of any.
I'm not aware of that.
Sorry, Leslie, yeah.
That I use in the office.
I just I just.
On the floor.
Just one benefit if we do go to districts is that it will help with this issue of when the board receives mail from the public, and they know who to give it to and what board member to give it to. Because Ted and I were talking about that this morning. And we believe that if we had districts, it would really help the problem. And so I'm kind of in favor of that. I'm not sure why it would cost so much. The the North Coast advisory council has districts. They call them GVAs, geographical voting areas. And they just looked at the population at the time. That could be adjusted, you know, in the future. But I don't know why that would cost a lot of money to to figure out, you know, five five geographical voting areas.
Well, I'll tell you that before I retired and I had responsibility for a community college district, we spent $75,000 for someone to structure the the wards, if you will, within within that district. And it's expensive.
Yeah, but you're talking about a whole district. We're talking about Cambria, you know, its population.
I realize it would probably less. I think Claudia, that was one of the reasons for waiting for the census before we even address it. Because I think the idea is to, if we have to do it, we can piggyback off the census. That we will know who lives where. The whole logic for this, the reason that this is happening is maintained that without districts, certain populations are underrepresented. And I believe Paso Robles is already they have already. Ready to. Let's not go too far down this, but you just need to be aware of it. A little additional excitement. And so I see we're back to our time limit in a couple of minutes.
I would like to extend it again because I do have a suggested mission statement, and I'd like to get to that.
Okay, well, let's do as this then. Let's extend, and then let's agree if if you all agree that. Let me ask before we extend. The subcommittee here, do you guys have enough feedback for the moment? That you can go back? Do you have every, maybe not everything you wanted from the full committee, but you have enough that you can carry back to and go back to work?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
We'll try again.
Cool. Okay, so I think we can then move on. But before we do, well, we got two minutes. Let's go ahead and extend. How much time do you think you need? We need, Claudia?
Then another 10 minutes or so. How many more things do we have? We have two things.
We're not going to get through the whole agenda.
No.
It's next on. Is it next on the agenda? Or no, we have discussion regarding replies to correspondence addressed by the board of directors. We don't really have a report for that. We continue to work on that. So.
Right, right, right.
Just extend the meeting by 10 minutes, you know, just make sure we're covered. I motion motion move that extend the meeting for 10 minutes.
I should extend 10 more minutes. Second, anybody?
Second.
Okay, second, seconded by Leslie. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 No, no opposition, motion passes unanimously. So moving on to the next item, where we're going to skip by request of the subcommittee, we will skip item B and table that or postpone that rather to our next meeting. So and what we'll do, let me ask you guys, do you think we'll be ready to vote? Will you have something for us to vote on at that time, do you think?
Well, we're talking about the, you know, districts and without it without a census and without an idea that we might possibly be changed into districts.
Right.
I mean, we can make a policy that if in the event that that happens, then this is what we propose. So.
So what we'll do is the reason I'm asking you that is so it'll be discussion and consideration that gives us the option of voting on it.
Okay.
Yeah, we can. We can do that, Claudia. Don't you think?
Yeah, we can.
Iteration gets moved. Hold on a second. Okay, moving then to item E. Discussion of policy, mission statement, and goals. And Claudia, I think you wanted to start this.
Oh, yeah, I will.
Need to call for public comment. Haley, do we have any public comment on this item?
I do not have any public comment on this item.
Really? All right, Claudia, please proceed.
Okay, well, it it's only two sentences, so I'll just read it to you. This is a suggested mission statement that I've had two two words missed go over, so it's not just my own words. They're both professional writers. It's been it's been it's been words missed. So the mission of the policy committee of the Cambria Community Service District is to develop a set of clear, legal, and ethical policies that establish the rules of conduct within the CCSD. These policies These policies are intended to protect the interest of the CCSD employees, Cambria rate and taxpayers, the general public, protect the environment and ensure adherence to all applicable statutes, rules and regulations.
Oh, interesting. Oh, cool. Okay. Um, well, as we can go ahead and share, um, Ted, you have one, do you want me to read it or shall?
Go ahead and read it. Go ahead and read it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, that's Ted's.
Oh, is that?
Is that Ted's? I think.
No, that's Claudia's. I sent you mine. Do you have it there?
Yeah, I'll read it.
Go ahead and read it, Don. Uh, you know, my first stab at something, so.
On proceeding with this, I think what we, let's, let's listen to what everybody has to say today. And then if you will send me your things, I will put them all on a piece of paper.
Yeah.
We'll put it out and then we can really talk about it. But right now, get it out there. So here's, uh, so shall I read yours, Ted, or would you like?
Please go right ahead.
Okay. Nothing like hearing your own words from somebody else's mouth.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, commissioned by the Cambria Community Services District Board of Directors, the Policy Standing Committee serves to introduce, refine, catalog and research the district policies that will be considered for adoption. Policies presented to the board should be congruent with other small districts, the county and state regulation. At its discretion, the board may approve, dismiss, excuse me, table or return submissions back to the committee. Thank you, Ted. I have one too, but I'll wait for, for last. John?
Oh, okay, go ahead, Don.
Oh, no, no, I, I get to be last.
Well, but we're going to, we're listening and, and reading, but you're going to send these to us and no action because I, I like, I like the elegance of the, of what Claudia offered. However, what's missing for me with Claudia's is the idea that we are a recommending body to the board and Ted had that, but then Ted's mission statement, my opinion, moves into procedure. So anyway, we're just listening now.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, which is great because all of these every little pieces that kind of fit together rather, so it's, this should be kind of fun when we get everybody. I'll, I'll tell you mine then. The policies committee, the policy committee's mission is to advise and assist the CCSD board in formulating and evaluating the district policies and those related procedures that are within the board, it's the board of directors purview. On request from the general manager, the committee may assist in documenting the district's operational procedures as well. So that's mine. Anybody else? Gordon, do you have one?
I pass.
Okay, John.
And now I pass too, but I'd love to see the three then, and then we can come back to.
Uh, Leslie, do you have any mission statement for us?
I pass.
All right, you go ahead.
This is your great opportunity. Okay, uh, yes, Ted?
Yeah, no, I think, uh, you know, I, I, I think what's going to happen here is we'll, we'll, we'll get all these together and, and, uh, you know, take bits and pieces of each one and, you know, and, and come up with something that, that, that makes sense. Yeah, Claudia had stuff in there that I didn't have and I didn't have stuff in there. You know, I mean, yeah, that's, that's just the way it goes. It gets kind of messy until it gets better.
Well, I like it. It's, it's kind of cool because they, the way they interact, you know, we could see where things fit and where they're.
Yeah.
I would look forward, yeah, you guys that didn't take this opportunity, uh, please before, if you would go ahead at some point, spend a few minutes and, and write me something as, and send me something that can include it as well. You know, we're not forcing you to, but we'd sure love to, you know, you can see each person, it's your opportunity to be a little creative, if you will. So, so for next meeting, that'll be on our agenda. And, and at that time, we'll have actually a writing, so you can all look and meditate upon it. And we may also, maybe an opportunity to get some input as well, you know, from the, the board or other members of the public. So that's great. I think are we not quite beyond our ten minutes? Where are we? I kind of lost track.
On F.
We're on F. Well, let's talk about F. I don't remember why this is here. Uh, this is the June twenty-fifth. Oh, Haley, can you remind us why we are changing the June twenty-fifth meeting?
Yeah, so the board of directors decided to hold a special meeting on Thursday, June twenty-fifth at 2:00 PM and the policy committee meeting is scheduled that day at 2:00 PM. So you guys will need to cancel your regular meeting and hold a special meeting at a date that you guys decide on.
Thank you, Haley.
You're welcome.
How would you guys feel about another Friday morning? Well, no, not maybe Friday afternoon, since some of you guys work in the morning?
Friday afternoon is fine for me, but it depends on what everybody else wants.
Yeah, what do you guys want to do?
That's good, that's good for me.
Leslie, did I hear you say something?
No, but I'll say it now. Uh, yeah, Friday afternoon's fine with me.
Friday afternoon, Friday afternoon, everybody?
Yeah, it works.
How about a little earlier than, than our usual two, two-thirty? Is that, uh, again, I'm just.
Like one o'clock or something?
That's all.
One o'clock, does that work?
One o'clock is good.
Don, may, uh, may I chime in? So just, uh, it, it may not matter for the board, but that's a staff day off the twenty-sixth. And I'll be involved with a negotiation with Tim Carmel all day long.
Okay, thank you, John. I, I don't know if we really need a hundred percent staff support if we conduct this meeting a little differently. How do you feel about that, John?
Well, it's Haley.
Yeah, Haley. That's the problem with Fridays, is that.
Yeah, and I also help record the meeting and bring in public, um, at the same time, so.
I, I don't want to, yeah, Haley needs to be available.
Yeah, is that a work day or a day off for you?
Go Wednesday, the twenty-fourth?
Well, that's a possibility. Let me look on mine.
I could do the twenty-fourth.
What is the?
Wednesday.
Am I hearing, uh, so Wednesday, the twenty-fourth?
At what time?
One o'clock?
Oh.
No?
Uh, I'm just thinking, I may be gone.
Ooh.
I may be gone. Uh, the twenty-fourth?
Yeah.
Well, you guys make your, you guys go ahead. I'm, I'm, I have to travel back to the Midwest at the end of June.
You would have missed the meeting regardless.
Yeah.
We can move it.
Wednesday, the twenty-fourth is okay and if Ted isn't going to be there any of those days, then.
Yeah.
Yeah, you got it. Yeah, that's true.
You guys, you guys will just have to make it, yeah. I mean, if you want to do it at the, at the end of the month, then yeah, if you want to do it earlier than that, might be okay. And I don't know if I'm going to be here on the twenty-fourth for sure yet, but it's a real strong possibility that I may be on the road.
I could do it on the eighteenth of Thursday.
That's, there's a board meeting then. We, we could do it in the morning.
Is there?
Yeah, there's a two o'clock board meeting. I'm cool.
Friday, the nineteenth.
And the nineteenth is free, but that Haley, that would, it can, it needs to be a workday for Haley.
Friday, June nineteenth is a workday for me, so I would be available.
Guys want to do it on the nineteenth?
Yeah.
Good day. At one o'clock?
One o'clock on the nineteenth, everybody?
Yeah.
Uh, I guess we should have, I'll make a motion just official. I move that our next meeting, our, our, um, June meeting be rescheduled for, uh, what did we just say? For Friday, June nineteenth at one o'clock.
Okay.
Or do you want to have it one-thirty, uh, just so people can have lunch?
Okay, at one-thirty.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right.
Okay. Motion amended, one-thirty. Is there a second? Who's, who moved? I, I did.
Oh, Don.
I don't like to, but I can make a motion, so. All in favor, please?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there a name?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous. So our next meeting will be, uh, what did we just say? June nineteenth at one-thirty.
Okay.
Got it. And I think I know I'll, I'll start working on the agenda tomorrow and try to get back to you guys early in the week, so we can kind of have our work plan worked out. And Ted, I think you and I will probably need to get started again on purchasing at some point here.
All, all we need to do is to get, uh, you know, Pamela in there and.
Yeah, I need to get organized, you know, so that we don't waste.
That's, that's the long and short of it. Once she, once she looks at procedure and says yes to this or no to that, we're pretty much ready to go to press after you get your numbering done.
Yeah. So, uh, while we got a couple of minutes, any other future agenda items?
Oh, I think we've got enough.
That's true. Let's see. Okay, so mission statement and correspondence to the board, which will, those will both be on our next meeting. And, uh, oh, yeah, and then the, uh, filling the vacancy. That pretty well, that should keep us busy.
Yeah.
Easily, couple hours on that. This is so much fun. Okay. All right. So I have nothing more. Anybody else? Any, any parting shots, everybody?
Be healthy.
Yeah, please, everybody, please stay healthy.
I just found out that my stockbroker lives at, he lives in Los Angeles. He's forty-nine years old and almost died from the coronavirus. Does not know where he got it. He got it back in March. He, he was on a ventilator for two weeks. All of organs were shutting down. He is a miracle, absolute miracle that he survived. And he wasn't that old and he doesn't, didn't have bad lungs. I just want to tell you that because be careful, be careful. And we have a lot of tourists now in town because things are opening up. So wear your mask in public, wear it everywhere. I don't recommend going into restaurants. I don't care what they, where they put their tables. I just think that we, until we really know, we got a grip on this, having people come from out of town and be close to them. Anyway, so be safe, be safe and, and take care of yourselves.
Russian, yeah.
Everybody be safe. And, and I, it's my, Claudia, this is, I don't know anyone who's died. I don't know anybody that knows anybody who's died. So, but now it's beginning. We're beginning to know people. Now I know someone who knows someone who's died. You're the first person, Claudia. But what that means is this is real. We can't forget. You, I don't need to convince you, but I'm just telling this in case anybody's watching this recording. This is real and it is serious. And, uh, anyway, thank you all and I hope to see you all in good health next, next month as well. Let me, any, anything you guys need, or if you guys, if you need, uh, help in zooming or anything, if you want to zoom together, I can host something for you. Uh, and I can also be a resource, but I'll let you guys do the hard work.
All right, thank you, Don.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good job, Don.
Thank you. Good job, everybody. Thank you all very much. Okay, I'm going to say goodbye now. Here we go. And thank you, Haley and John.
You're welcome. Have a good day.
Thank you. Thank you, Haley, and thank you, John Weigold. Everybody have a good day and please stay healthy.